Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Harlecker, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Hosh.
Here.
Commissioner Knoblock.
Here.
Chair Schwartz.
Here.
Commissioner Schmalki.
Here.
Commissioner Stevenson.
Here.
And Commissioner Stevens is absent from tonight's meeting.
Okay, first we need to adopt the agenda.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
I second it.
With an addition, though, we have three items to add. We're going to add the election of the vice chair position as the number eight to the agenda. Number nine will be to adopt the 2016 Rules of Order, internal policies and procedures, and code of ethics, and add number 10, which is accept the 2015 planning commission annual report.
Is there a second?
I second.
Motion by Schmalki, second by Knoblock. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we approve the minutes of our December 17, 2015, meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Hosh.
I move that we approve the minutes as stated.
Second.
Motion by Hosh, second by Stevenson. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. First order of business is Planning Case 16-1, a site plan for a 15-unit townhome development at 1005 Coon Rapids Boulevard Extension, Vision Bank. And this item is going to be postponed to the February 18 meeting at the request of the petitioner. I will be opening a public hearing. If anyone is here to speak on this matter, they can come forward and talk now, or they can wait and come to the February meeting. Anyone who wants to speak on this matter. All right, motion to continue to February 18 meeting, please.
So moved.
Stevenson?
Second.
Second by Schmalki.
Hosh.
I heard her first.
It's okay, it's fine. I didn't hear you.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Second item is Planning Case 16-2, a preliminary plat for Vision 15, 15-lot townhome development in 1005 Coon Rapids Boulevard Extension, Vision Bank. Again, the petitioner has requested this be postponed to the February 18 meeting. I will open a public hearing on this case. Anyone here who wants to speak on this case? Seeing none, we will continue this public hearing to the February 18 meeting. Is there a motion to continue the...
So moved.
I second.
motion by Stevenson, second by Knoblock. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Third order of business, Planning Case 16-4, a registered land survey, 12856 Crooked Lake Boulevard, Rachel Niemann. Mr. Harlecker.
This is Chair and Commissioners. This is a registered land survey for property at 12856 Crooked Lake Boulevard. This probably looks familiar. The Commissioner saw this same subdivision back in November and recommended approval at that time. They took the subdivision to the county. The county requested that they do it as a lot, as a registered land survey because of discrepancies in the legal description. So they're back before the commission tonight with the registered land survey. If you recall, the property is 97,000 square feet. Currently, as you can see from the air photo here, the lots are split across lengthwise, so you've got a north lot and a south lot. What they're proposing to do is take the lot, then split it, so you've got an east parcel and a west parcel. Parcel B here has frontage on 128th and Crooked Lake Boulevard. Parcel A has the lot frontage. Nothing's changed from the registered land survey, or from the lot split. It's simply now a registered land survey. Staff is recommending approval of the proposed registered land survey with the conditions that the appropriate drainage and utility easements be approved by the city engineer, park dedication in the amount of $4,000, that's $2,000 per lot, and compliance with Title 11 Land Development Regulations.
Okay.
This is the registered land survey.
Just one correction, Mr. Harlecker. I believe you said frontage on 128th. It's 129th.
129th.
Okay. Is the petitioner here? Is there anything they would like to say? Nope. No? All right. All right, Commission? Your desires?
Do you have to open a public hearing?
Yes, thank you. We'll open a public hearing on this case. Anyone here to speak to this case? Step forward, please. Seeing none, close the public hearing. Now, Commission.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Hosh.
In Planning Case 16-4, I move that the planning commission recommend approval of the proposed registered land survey with the following conditions: the appropriate drainage and utility easement to be approved by the city engineer and recorded by the county; number two, park dedication in the amount of $4,000, $2,000 per lot be paid prior to releasing the lots that were split for recording; and number three, compliance with Title 11 Land Development Regulations.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Schmalki. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. This is a decision by the... or recommendation by the planning commission to be heard by the city council at their February 2 meeting. Next on the agenda, we have Planning Case 15... excuse me, 16-5, an ordinance amendment to allow boat and motor repair in Port Campus Square as a permitted use. Dean Johnson. Mr. Harlecker.
Yes, Commissioners and Chair, Mr. Johnson is requesting an ordinance amendment to allow boat and motor repair in Port Campus Square. On the air photo here is a delineation of Port Campus Square. The outlines are in the dark black boundary here. This is the only, excuse me, zoning district in the city that is affected by this proposed amendment. For everybody who's watching, this is the Family Center Mall, ICE Arena, the shopping center with the Goodwill store in it, the apartment building that Dominion is going down in this corner here. Mr. Johnson owns the property. It's right at the intersection of Crooked Lake Boulevard and Coon Rapids Boulevard. It's this triangular piece right here. Currently, there, it's an auto repair business that's been in there, that was originally approved in 1987. There is also a boat and motor repair business that went into the vacant space there. That's what triggered this request for the ordinance amendment. Code enforcement went out there, and boat and motor repair is not an allowed use in any of the port districts. It is allowed in the general commercial and industrial districts, but not in any other ports. The applicant, Mr. Johnson, asked, you know, what can be done to allow this business to stay in this location, and he was told he had to amend a... do a code amendment, and that's what triggered this request. In looking and comparing boat and motor repair with automobile repair, which is allowed as a conditional use in this port, they're fairly similar uses in most respects. The repairs are done inside. They involve working on engines and cars or boats. But where the big difference is, is the storage of the vehicles that are being worked on. Typically, cars don't sit at the repair business very long. People will drop them off and hopefully pick them up later in the day. And cars that are parked there, appearance-wise, it's not any different than any other commercial business with cars parked in the parking lot. With boats, on the other hand, they tend to remain on-site for longer periods of time, taking up parking spaces, and have more of a significant visual impact. They're often covered with tarps and brightly colored shrink wrap, so they do have an aesthetic and a visual impact on the area. In looking through the campus square master plan and the framework plan for Coon Rapids Boulevard, future development and redevelopment of the districts, one of the goals is to include enhanced streetscape and a pedestrian experience, and the plan also calls for establishing a visual image that is appealing and comfortable. And the outdoor storage of the boats is inconsistent and will detract from those goals. It's for that reason that staff is recommending denial of the proposed ordinance amendment to allow boat and motor repair as a permitted use in Port Campus Square.
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. Is the petitioner present? We will open a public hearing in this matter. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this matter? Please step forward. Seeing no one, close the public hearing. Commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stevenson.
First, I have a question for Mr. Harlecker. Mr. Harlecker, did staff consider the possibility of adopting an amendment to the ordinance that also would limit the amount of time that a boat could be on-site to deal with this issue of long-term storage?
We thought about that, and that would be an enforcement nightmare. How do you know how long the boats are stored there for?
If... another question, real quick, is was there also... there used to be... you mentioned the only property in the district that said that, you know, there's this one usage. Was... did there used to be a boat repair facility down on 111th in that facility? I think it's now a thrift store.
Was there? I defer to Rapid Sports. Rapid Sports Center, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. I guess my view, I don't agree that we should limit this. I think that it's... the visual impact there is not terrible. You know, I live right by that. I've seen a boat, there was a boat repair place for a long, long time. I've seen the boats out there. It didn't really seem like it was inconsistent with the area. I think the parking concern also doesn't seem to be very strong. I mean, the parking lot for that facility just serves that facility, and if the ownership wants to allow its spaces to be used for boats, it doesn't really bother me. It's parking used for the Grand Slam or the Family Center Mall. So I actually would favor amending the ordinance to allow this to be boat repair.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Schmalki.
So, again, another question, I guess, for Mr. Harlecker, too, is are we concerned that the storage of the boats and so forth could bleed over into the other parking area behind the building and so forth? Is it, you know, is there concern for the amount of parking that is available at this location to manage both vehicles and the boats?
Commissioner Schmalki, the site is overpart for auto repair businesses. There's more than enough places, parking spaces, for the auto repair business. There is no parking behind it.
Correct.
That's all grass space behind it, and there's no room to put new parking behind it because the building is too close to that rear property line.
I... yes, I remember that, too, but I was wondering if we were thinking that the parking lot that is adjacent to it, then behind it, where the athletic place, I forgot what it's called, the Grand Slam, is it Grand Slam where that's located? Are we concerned about them using that space? I guess the point that I'm getting at is coming back to, you know, how could we make this work? Is there other things that we could consider? Maybe even just going back and talking with them, and if it makes sense to come back to us again at a later date with maybe some options. I do feel like it's kind of limited in, you know, in the reasons to deny it. I'd like to see a little bit more of what our options are for maybe making it work and being able to make a decision from there as a contradiction.
Do you have any ideas as to...
Well, I guess, I think I'm worried about, if you're worried about the aesthetics of it, understanding a little bit more about the anticipated volume. Will they limit how many boats that they would have on-site at a time that they'd be working on? Are there different things like that that we could ask them to do to make sure that it remains, you know, it doesn't look overcrowded or aesthetically unappealing, right? So I just feel like there's got to be some things that maybe we could do. I realize that it's an enforcement issue, then, but it seems like some solution could be simple to manage and more than others.
Commission, anyone else?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Hosh.
Back when the ports were being contemplated, they were decided, it was decided that they needed to be some special areas along the Boulevard and should strive to be more than what they were. And so I agree with staff that having boats sitting outside is not in the spirit of how these ports were considered to be created in the first place. So I would be against, or I would be for the staff's recommendation.
Thank you. Commissioner Knoblock, any comments?
Yes, the comment I have is I can see both sides of the argument. I would have to side on the side of Schmalki because if it isn't a safety concern, if it isn't a public community concern, just because it has aesthetics, I don't think that's a disqualifying enough factor. I would be more concerned about safety and community. There is not a lot of involvement in the area by people at the open hearing here tonight. I think if the business should be allowed to operate its business within certain frameworks, so I am... I think there should be, like Commissioner Schmalki mentioned, I think it's very reasonable to see about looking for alternative options or guidelines that the city and the community can be both satisfied going forward. Instead of just outright denial, I think a little bit more effort would be reasonable.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Schmalki.
One follow-up question, I guess, is I do recognize the petitioner isn't here this evening. Does the petitioner have any or offer any recommendations into how they could help with that concern?
Mr. Schmalki, no, you did not.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stevenson.
I think that there are some... I agree with Commissioner Schmalki that there are ways that we could try and address some of the concerns while still allowing these to continue. I think that it's worth considering putting some sort of limit on how long the boats can be on-site. I understand that there's an enforcement problem there, but really, the consideration here would be if a boat's there for just a really extended period of time, you know, you would have some, something you could hang an enforcement action on, right? You know, you're not going to be monitoring every single boat that's on the property and checking how long it's been there, but if a boat's been there for six months and the limit is, you know, arbitrary, I'm just making this up, 21 days, then you've got something to say, hey, you can't have that boat there. And I think you could also limit the number of boats that they can have on the property given time, and even limit the manner in which they're stored, you know. You can't use brightly colored tarps, or I don't know what you do, but I agree that there would be, there should be some ground to compromise. I think I note that we've extended the review period to April 8th. Is that what it says here on the 60-day rule section of our report?
Yes, Commissioner Stevens, that's because of the two-pronged process in the council where they introduce it one meeting, and then the next meeting, they consider it past, it stretches it out past the 60-day period.
So my question is, if we tabled this until our February meeting and gave staff a chance to talk to the applicant and to maybe come back with some of these additional restrictions that we've been talking about, are we going to be putting ourselves in trouble for the 60-day rule?
With the 60-day, probably not. I'd have to confer with our attorney over there. They, their application was very specific in requesting that it be a permitted use in this port. How much flexibility do we have as far as changing it over, maybe making it a conditional use permit, or tacking specific qualifications onto that as a permitted use? It's got a permitted use providing it does X, Y, and Z.
Well, Chair Schwartz and Mr. Harlecker, I think the way I would approach that is if we didn't, if we didn't have a good way to resolve it within the framework that they're requesting, that would be a denial, but you could propose something else, for example, in the meantime, and then proceed on that. So, I mean, as a practical matter, it can happen that way. You don't have to just go back to square one. I guess in hearing what the commission has to say, I think maybe one way to approach this would be have dialogue with the applicant in the meantime here. Also, I think I'd like to provide the commission with a little bit more information about what the original purpose of the framework plan was for Coon Rapids Boulevard, and especially the intent of the port districts. And the commission may find within those guidelines either methods that allow this to happen with, you know, whatever conditions seem appropriate, and maybe staff can be trying to figure that out in advance, or may also find that, you know, it doesn't fit within the intent of these standards here. But at least you'd have a little bit more information before just, you know, making the decision based on, boy, this seems okay, or this doesn't seem okay, without more. That'd just be my kind of feeling about it.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I've got a few comments to make on this as well. I tend to agree with Commissioner Hosh that this really doesn't fit in the port area. Just recently, last time I drove by the business, there was a boat, and from my recollection, it has been there for some time, that appeared to be partially disassembled, and it's been sitting out there for, to me, it seemed like an ungodly amount of time. As well, there's at least one boat that's covered in blue shrink wrap that's obviously being stored for the winter, and I would believe that that would possibly fall under outdoor storage, and I don't believe we allow outdoor storage in the port districts. So I would tend to, as I said, agree with Commissioner Hosh and go along with the recommendations of the plant, of the staff. What would the commission like to do?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Stevenson.
I'm going to make a motion that we lay this item on the table to allow staff time to discuss with the applicant situation and also gather the information presented that Mr. Johnson suggested he might like to provide us with.
I'd like to second that.
Motion by Stevenson, second by Schmalki, to table this to...
Our February meeting.
The February meeting. Mr. Johnson, I give you enough time to put together information?
Yes.
And Mr. Harlecker, time to contact the petitioner? All right. Any further discussion? There is no discussion on tabling, as I recall. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? Item is then tabled to our February meeting. Next item on our agenda, Planning Case 15-34, a conditional use permit and site plan for vehicle maintenance facility, 11301 Dogwood Street, Anderson Johnson Associates. Mr. Harlecker.
Chair Schwartz and Commissioners, this is a request by the school district to construct a 14,000-square-foot vehicle maintenance facility. The site is just north of Northdale Middle School. The school is right there, and the site is right there on the east side of Dogwood. Here is their site plan. Along with this, conditional use permit and site plan request is a request for a preliminary plat that the commission will be looking at next, and that creates the lot, among other things, that this facility will sit on. Access will be in off of Dogwood Street, the 30-foot wide access coming in to the building. The building is set back about 120 feet from Dogwood. There's driveways around it, and then a parking area to the rear with 15 parking spaces. I believe there's five storage bins here and a dumpster enclosure to the back. The back area will be enclosed with a six-foot-high chain link fence. Quite a bit of grading that's going on on the site. Discussions on the final grading and stormwater management is currently being worked out between the city engineer's office and the applicant's engineer. There's a proposed pond to the north and a smaller one to the south that's adjacent to City Wellhouse, which is right here. Land kind of drops off. It's very hilly. That's why there's so much grading going on. This site here is slightly lower than the street. I think the street's at about 907 elevation, and the main floor of the building and the parking lot is at 905. Building will be about 28 feet tall. Here's the landscaping plan. They do a good job of screening the facility from the street and the property to the, to the east here. They've got a mix of overstory trees, evergreen trees, and there's arbor veyde mixed in there also. And the white areas along here are areas that'll keep the existing vegetation. They also got overstory trees and shrubs coming in on this side of the driveway, ornamental trees on the north and south end of the building, and then a mix of overstory and evergreens on the back. Here's the building elevations. It's a precast, kind of a light brown, tip-up panels with darker service doors here, and then the darker overhead doors. then the darker overhead doors. Windows, this is on, this would be the back elevation, and then this is the front. I'm assuming they got them in back to catch the morning and afternoon sun coming in. Here's the layout of the building. As you can see, most of it here is service bays. They've got unheated space here, then a heated bay, a shop area, and then facilities for the employees here, then a overhead mezzanine in this area here. The back area here will serve for employee parking as well as the occasional visitor that may come. There are handicap spaces back here also. Lighting, they've got, they've got some shoebox lighting on the exterior of the building that'll shine down on the building, and there'll be two pole-mounted lights on the east side of the building. The facility will have to comply with the performance standard that limits glare to three-foot candles at the property lines, giving the vegetation in front of the building and the distance from adjacent properties. That should not be a problem. With that, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit and site plan for the vehicle maintenance facility. A little extra background on this. The proposed facility is considered a governmental building or facility for zoning purposes, and those require a conditional use permit in the residential district. Those type of facilities include functions such as public works, water treatment facilities, and wastewater processing facilities. And staff is recommending approval of the proposal with the following conditions: all comments of the assistant city engineer be addressed, the applicant enter into a site security agreement, the applicant comply with City Code Title 11, tree preservation plan and its implementation be approved by the city forester prior to grading commencing on site, the dumpster enclosure and storage bins be constructed of the same or similar material as the building, and the storage buildings include roofs, and the final plat must be recorded prior to the issuance of a grading permit. The applicant is in the audience also to answer questions and...
All right, thank you, Mr. Harlecker. Commission, any questions on Mr. Harlecker? All right, we do have a public hearing on this matter as been opened in previous meetings and was last continued at our December meeting. I will reopen that public hearing. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this case at the public hearing? Please step up to the microphone, state your name, give your address.
Lisa Scordall. My address is 11526 Cottonwood Street, so I'm right in the area. I'm wondering what the hours would be of this operation, any noise levels that maybe could be expected to affect the neighborhood?
Let the applicant speak to that.
Commissioner, you could also give your name and an address, please.
I'm Mike Kraft. I'm the architect for the project 1442 98th Lane Northwest in Coon Rapids is my address. And to respond directly to the question, typical hours are about 7:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. If you, if anybody wants to see how that works today, the facility, we're replacing the facility that is on 113th Avenue behind the old school district headquarters, and so outside of those hours, unless there's a snowstorm when folks may come in and take a truck and leave, it's quiet. The vehicles that they use in the facility are generally large pickups and small, like one-ton dump trucks, not the big dump trucks, but small trucks and vans. And so I think at this time, I don't believe they even own a diesel vehicle, so they're really, it's, it's the same kind of noise, it's almost residential level noise, and it's not 24 hours, it's just during the day. There are about a dozen people that work in the building, show up about 7:00 o'clock, many of them will leave with a truck to do their work throughout the district during the day and then come back mid-afternoon and switch back to their vehicle. There are maybe three or four people who will be working there throughout the day, but most of the folks are working off-site.
Did I answer your questions, ma'am?
Yes.
Any other questions? All right. Anyone else for a public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. And Mr. Kraft, anything else you would like to say on this case?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, I did bring along a couple of samples of the precast tilt-up panel material. Just to give you a sense, it matches the elevations that you've seen, but just to give you a sense of what that material is, it is just a slightly textured material with an integral color. Of course, the idea being that it will look the same after 30 years as it does after one year with the integral color. I have two samples here. I'd pass them around, but you saw me carry them. They're weighty, so it might be best just to view them here. But the color that you see in there, it's not a painted color and it's not an artificial color, it's actually the texture, the color of the rock that's in it, so that's permanent. And we would want to mix up, it's hard to see on the elevations, but we would, to break up the scale of the building, we would introduce, there's a little bit of each in there just to reduce the scale a little bit. It's not a big building at 14,000 square feet, it really isn't a big building, but it's in, but we want to keep it as fine-grained and small visually as we can.
Then as far as the doors, just a dark brown?
Yes, Mr. Chair members of the commission, they would be a dark brown aluminum door with glass panels to break up the scale of those doors as well and bring some light into the building.
All right, thank you. Commission, any questions?
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Hosh.
My only concern was going to be the, from the renderings we had, it did look like it was all kind of flat one color, so I really appreciate that there are two, two different materials, and I think that concern of mine is not addressed.
Thank you. Anyone else? A question I have, didn't show on the site plan, where exactly would the dumpster enclosure and any storage bins that you're talking about, where exactly are they located?
They will be back, well, this isn't working very well. It will be right, the dumpster enclosure is here, the storage bins are right in here, and then we've got parking across the back row here. So they're behind the building.
Okay, so any storage would be in the bins, there would be no outside storage?
Mr. Chair members of the commission, it's our understanding that there is no outdoor storage planned for this facility or allowed, and that's why we do have the bins and the dumpster. So there is, there will be no outdoor storage on the facility.
Thank you. Commission.
Chair Schwartz.
Mr. Hosh.
In planning case 16-1, I move that the commission approve the conditional use permit and site plan for a vehicle maintenance facility with the six stated conditions in our package. I'll second.
Motion by Hosh, second by Schmalky. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The decision by the planning commission, appeal to the city council is available.
Thank you.
Our next case settles along with this one, it's planning case 15-35, the preliminary plat for 11301 Dogwood Street, Northdale Middle School and Eisenhower Elementary School property, Anderson Johnson Associates. Mr. Harlecker.
Chair Schwartz and commissioners, this is the companion plat for the site plan that you just saw. They're taking this, this whole area here, it's about 79 acres, and replating it. At this point, there's, there's a mix of use, property owners here, the city owns part of it and the school district owns part of it, and the school has stuff on the city property and the city has stuff on the school district property. So this is really an attempt to, to clean that up. And what they're proposing is six lots and two outlots. For display purposes, we broke it up into a north and south so we could actually see some of the details. This is the southern part of the parcel with Northdale Boulevard here, and this is Eisenhower Elementary, which would be on its own lot, Lot 2, and this is the Northdale Middle School, which would be on its own lot, which is Lot 1. There is a water wellhouse down here and a wellhouse over this area. Those will each be on their own lots. This is a drainage pond here that'll be left as an outlot. And on the north, this is the, the north end of the elementary, of the middle school, there's a city wellhouse here. This is, will be the lot for the vehicle maintenance facility, and this area up here is left as an outlot for possible future development. As part of this preliminary plat request, the school, or the request includes a couple variances to lot depth and lot frontage. This wellhouse here does not have any frontage, so there'll be an easement to access it, and the wellhouses do not meet the lot depth requirement. They do meet the lot area and width requirement, though. The other, the other lots for the two schools and the maintenance facility comply with all the dimensional requirements. Again, drainage, grading and drainage issues are being addressed with the engineers. One of the larger issues that'll, that'll have to be worked out is replacement of the easements. The site is crossed by, I believe, sanitary sewer and storm sewer lines, so there'll have to be easements, will have to be confirmed over those existing facilities. Staff is recommending approval of the preliminary plat with the condition that all the engineering comments be addressed prior to releasing the plat for recording, and also that all title issues, issues, excuse me, must be addressed prior to applying for final plat and mortgage consent be obtained prior to getting the plat recording. Staff is also recommending approval of the variances to the minimum lot depth and frontage with the five or six findings contained in the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. Any questions? Well, first, we have a public hearing that was opened in a previous meeting. We'll reopen that public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to speak to this public hearing? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Commission. Mr. Johnson, first off, can we take this all as one motion or should we do it as two separate motions?
I'm okay with one motion. If the commission finds that it wants to do different things, then it can always break it up.
Thank you. I'll begin. I know the school district has had that maintenance facility over off 113th for some time, and since that property's been sold, you obviously need, they need to move, and I believe this looks like would be an ideal location. I kind of like the looks of the building, especially after seeing the materials. It will give us a little breakup in color, and I think it would be a good addition to the neighborhood. Commission.
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Hosh.
In planning case 16-1, I move that the planning commission recommend approval of the preliminary plat based on the one condition and recommend approval of the variance to minimum lot depth and lot frontage based on the six stated conditions.
Motion by Hosh, second by Stevenson. Any further discussion?
Commissioner, or Chair Schwartz?
Mr. Harlecker.
I would like the commission to include the two conditions, that all issues, all title issues must be addressed prior to final plat, applying for final plat, and that the mortgage consent be obtained prior to recording the final plat.
That would be with the first.
So we'd have three conditions.
Three conditions. Is that all right with the motioner?
Yes.
And the secondary?
Yep.
All right. Further discussion by commission? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. This is a recommendation by the planning commission and be heard by the city council at its February 2nd meeting. Thank you. Good luck in building, good luck.
Thank you, Chair.
All right, next item, planning case 16-3, a zoning code amendment revising allowed exterior building materials in the residential, commercial, and office and industrial districts. Mr. Harlecker.
Yes, Chair Schwartz and commissioners.
Staff is proposing some changes to the exterior building materials for primarily institutional and commercial buildings. At a city council workshop to discuss the design of the Sand Creek building, discussion included possible modifications to our existing acceptable exterior materials list, and given changes in the building industry with respect to materials, council asked staff to review possible changes to the city code. So that's why this item is before the commission tonight. A couple changes are being proposed. The first one relates to park structures. Current code is silent on how park structures should be treated. In the absence of specific language, we have treated park structures as institutional buildings and required them to comply with material requirements. Park structures are often smaller and are generally designed to be more compatible and blend in and enhance the park experience, and often more natural materials might be more appropriate than concrete block and tip-up panels. And in light of that, staff is proposing to exclude park structures from the exterior material requirements. Other changes to the materials list, we refined the list... Other changes to the materials list, we refined the, the list a little bit. The current materials include brick, stone, architectural glass, architectural metal, stucco, architectural precast panels, specialty blocks, and fiber cement siding. What staff did is we went and looked at and checked what other cities have for materials lists. And I found that, for the most part, they're very consistent with a lot of them. I looked at 11 cities, all 11 had brick, all 11 had stone, all 11 had architectural glass. Eight of them had the metal, eight had stucco and/or ephes, six had the precast panels, and five have the specialty blocks, the split-face block type of material. So we were right in the, the ballpark in most of those. None of the cities I looked at had fiber cement siding listed as a, as a material. Most of the cities also had a requirement for a mix of, mix of materials, and they did that with a percentage. They either had, could not have more than 65% of any one material, some of them had 35% of one material. 65 would require two different materials, 35%, you'd have to have three different materials off that acceptable materials list. What staff is proposing for the list is follows, it's, it's more refined, but generally in sync with what we currently have. Brick or similar custom masonry unit, having a brick-like appearance, natural or concrete stone, non-reflective architectural glass, and architectural metal. And speaking with an architect, I mean, did some research, and we found that what, there's a, a term used in the industry called single-skin rolled formed profiles, and that's to distinguish it from your typical, you know, the corrugated pole barn type metal material. And they also have a, a minimum gauge of somewhere between 22 and 24 gauge. So I picked the, the thicker material, which is a 22-gauge metal. So we've got some design standards built into that. Masonry, stucco, or ephes, and there is a report out there, a building code report, ICC ES report, and what that is, it sets standards for installation of ephes. The problem seemed to have been in the past, is not with the material itself, but with the way it was installed. And this, this report sets guidelines and establishes guidelines so how, for how ephes should be, should be installed on buildings. We also have, I kept in the intricately colored split-face, rock face, burnished or glazed concrete masonry units. And we still have the architectural precast panels, but went into a little more detail in it, and they have, must have, can allow an exposed aggregate, a light sandblast finish, acid etch, form liner, natural stone, a, a stone veneer, a brick face, and/or some cast-type stone. And what they do is, they could do, put all kinds of finishes on these precast panels. Now, you can make it look everything from, like the brick behind you there, to limestone walls, and until you get up real close, you really can't tell the difference. We are still excluding the single-T, double-T panels, plain uncolored or raked finished on these, these are the more heavy industrial-type finishes on the buildings. We also added, because materials are changing all the time, we added a, a, a final one, that other materials determined as acceptable by the director. In most cases, this allows staff some flexibility. If it's a new building, it's going to be coming to the planning commission for review, and they'll have an opportunity to decide if the material that's being proposed is acceptable or not. On smaller buildings, if it's more than, I think it's 33%, it comes to the commission for review. If the expansion is less than that, it's done through the building permit. So in that case, it'd be more of a staff call as to whether the material will work. Generally, when they're putting on additions to the buildings, we require that the material be compatible with the existing building. So you're not going to have a concrete block building and some new type of material being built into the addition. Typically, that won't happen. In the residential districts, general community and neighborhood, commercial districts, and office districts, staff is proposing that 35% be included in, in the ordinance whereby no any one material can exceed 35%. So you're going to have three different materials in there. We also added language. The council was concerned about monotony in the buildings, they wanted variety of materials as well as colors. So we also added language in the introduction part of the ordinance, where the exterior of the building must include a variation building materials and colors. The "and colors" is new. The building materials and colors, which are to be distributed throughout the building facades, and coordinated into the architectural design of the structure. And then, in the industrial district, it's the same list of materials. However, the mix can be 35% instead of 65%. So we allow just two materials. We still have the language about variation in building materials and color. That's it for the, for the changes. For the most part, it was kind of a fine-tuning of, of what we have. Now, answer any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Harlecker. Commission, any questions for Mr. Harlecker? Mr. Harlecker, I do have one question. The part where you're exempting parks, recommending exempting park structures from the requirements. If we were to ever get our community center built down at the ice arena, technically that's within a park, so would that facility be considered a park structure?
Um, but actually-
Exempting it from requirements?
That wouldn't be, that's not a park. And there's a small park in front of it. That would probably be on its own separate lot within Port Campus Square.
Okay.
So it would have to meet the, the design, the design standards.
Alright, thank you. Commission, what are your wishes?
Chair Schwartz, I think-
Mr. Johnson.
Public hearing.
Oh, that's right, thank you. I always forget one, or, or more. I will open a public hearing in this case, if there's anyone here present that would like to speak to this matter in the public hearing. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Now, commission?
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Schmoki.
In Planning Case 16-3, recommend approval of the attached ordinance revising the acceptable materials for multifamily, institutional, commercial, and industrial buildings.
Second.
Motion by Schmoki, second by Stevenson. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. This is a recommendation by the planning commission, will be heard by the city council at their February 2nd meeting. Next, we'll move on to number eight on our agenda, and elect the vice chair for the commission for 2016. Anyone wish to volunteer to be vice chair?
I'll nominate, Mr. Hosh.
Second.
Alright, we have a motion by Schmoki, second by Stevenson to nominate Commissioner Hosh as our vice chair. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Item nine, we need to adopt our rules of order, our internal procedure and policies, and code of ethics for 2016.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Stevenson.
I move that we adopt the 2016 code of ethics, rules of order, internal procedure, and policies.
Second.
Motion by Stevenson, second by Hosh. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And finally, we need to accept the 2015 Planning Commission annual report.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Hosh.
I move that we approve the 2015 Planning Commission annual report. I'll second.
Motion by Hosh, second by Schmoki. Any discussion? We had quite a few pieces of business in 2015. Won't go through them all, but just suffice it to say, the commission once kept busy in 2015. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Any other business? Mr. Harlecker?
Yeah, I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate Commissioners Hosh and Stevens on their reappointment. Council reappointed them to another term at their January meeting. And to you, Chair Schwartz, you were also reappointed as chair of the commission. So congratulations.
Thank you. What do we have as far as any current development that you might want to talk about?
We've got the ongoing projects, Super America is open.
Super America open, yeah.
Yep. The Dominion apartment building is, is going strong. Construction tends to slow down now in the winter, but they're, they're still moving forward on that. And then, next month, we have the, the townhouse development on the property on Coon Rapids Boulevard Extension. We have the mini storage facility that's on Coon Rapids Boulevard, formerly known as Dot Mini Storage. They're expanding the, a small expansion to their parking lot. That may or may not be on February. They're currently working out, so some engineering issues with that, and grading and drainage issues. That may be pushed out until the March meeting. If that's the case, we will re-advertise the public hearing notice and send out public hearing notices for that. The other item on for the February meeting is a home occupation permit, and then the, the ordinance amendment that was postponed this evening.
Alright. Thank you. Commission, anything, anyone has? Otherwise, take a motion to adjourn.
So what?
Motion by Stevenson?
Seconded.
Second by Knablock. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Please adjourn.